Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Adjustment Township of Berkeley Heights. We are located here at 29 Park Avenue in Berkeley Heights. Tonight is May 15th, 2025. We have 7:00 PM available on the clock, and we will be doing a slight camera adjustment thanks to Mr. Coviallo. And please note that this meeting is being held in conformance with all regulations of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice for the meeting has been posted on the town website and sent to the newspapers of record. The agenda has been posted on the town website and the Bolton Board at Municipal Town Hall at least 48 hours in advance of this evening's meeting. The agenda items will not necessarily be heard in the order listed in the meeting document and send you substantially past 10:30 PM. May I have a roll call, Regina? Thanks.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
Ms. Coviallo.
Here.
Ms. Liam.
Sons of regrets.
Mr. Ringway.
Sons of regrets.
Mr. Sylvester.
Here.
Mr. Pareda.
Here.
Ms. West Augustin.
Here.
Mr. Deegan.
Here.
Ms. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. Hallow.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the adoption of minutes from April 24th, 2025. Ms. West, did you have an opportunity to review the minutes from April 24th?
Yes, I have.
And may I have a motion on that?
A motion to approve.
And they have a second by Mr. Deegan.
My second.
All in favor on the adoption of minutes?
Aye.
Thank you. The adoption of resolutions, application 25006. Matthew Holden, 105 Riverbend Road, Block 1002, Lot 95. Mr. Coviallo, do you have an opportunity to review this resolution?
I read the resolution. The read was in order. I'll make a motion to accept.
And they have a second by Mr. Deegan.
My second.
And a roll call on 105 Riverbend, 25006.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Coviallo.
Yes.
Mr. Deegan.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Application 25004, Vito and Kimberly Pignotelli, 163 Cornell Avenue, Lot 1712, Lot 5. This was a rear yard improvement. Mr. Deegan, did you have an opportunity to review the resolution?
I did. I found it in order. I made a motion to approve.
And they have a second by Ms. West?
Second.
She's not eligible.
Okay. They have a second by Mr.?
That would be Mr. Coviallo.
Coviallo.
Yes.
And for those that are eligible to vote, roll call.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Coviallo.
Yes.
Mr. Deegan.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Application 25002, Missouli Living Trust, 60 Liberty Avenue, Block 1806, Lot 3. This was an expansion to the existing single-family home. Mr. Coviallo, did you have an opportunity to review the resolution?
I read the resolution. The read was in order. I'll make a motion to accept.
And Mr. Deegan, a second?
My second.
And a roll call on the members that are available and eligible to vote on this application resolution?
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Coviallo.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Application 240017, Garrett Goldfinger, 22 Princeton Avenue, Lot 1105, Lots 7 and 7.01. This was a negotiated reduction to a detached garage with a fair amount of conditions. Mr. Coviallo, do you have an opportunity to review the resolution in its entirety?
I did. The read was in order. I'll make a motion to accept.
And they have a second by Mr. Deegan.
My second.
And a roll call on the eligible members?
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Coviallo.
Yes.
Mr. Deegan.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Application 220017, Chris Tribuna, Fat Brook Street, Lot 1603, Lot 9, in the R15 zone off of Park Avenue. This was a request for an extension on a prior approval. Mr. Deegan, did you have an opportunity to review the resolution?
I did. I made a motion to approve.
And they have a second by Mr. Coviallo.
My second.
And roll call on the eligible members?
Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Coviallo.
Yes.
Mr. Deegan.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. And application 23005. Oh, we're gonna move on to our session this evening, 230005. The Tone residence located at 76 Old Cannon Road, Block 2303, Lot 34. Sir, if you can please step up to the podium and Ms. Wolf will swear you in and we'll chat about your extension.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Your name and address?
James Tone, 76 Old Cannon Road.
And can you just tell us, we were through the process a year or so ago?
Correct.
And you are interested in extending that. I want to just give us a Cliff Notes version of your extension.
Sure. At the time I last appeared, we were finishing up our work with the architect but had not engaged any contractor. As of today, we are in contract negotiations, hoping to complete that this month and then move into construction as their schedule permits.
And your request is a one-year extension?
Yes.
Because it was 2024 when it expired, so we have to add an extra year.
So through June of 2026.
Is that enough time for you, do you think?
I would hope so, yes.
Okay.
Well, if the construction, if he pulls permits, it's an active permit.
Right.
It's within the pulse of the resolution. Board members, any questions or comments regarding the request for extension? Hearing no one, may I get a request, a?
You actually have a resolution too, so?
We do have a resolution.
So you can vote and memorialize at the same time.
Okay, so may I get a motion on this, Mr. Coviallo?
Make a motion to accept.
And a second by Ms. West? And a roll call on the extension first?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Coviallo.
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester.
Yes.
Mr. Pareda.
Yes.
Ms. West Augustin.
Yes.
Mr. Deegan.
Yes.
And now we do have a resolution available this evening, extending the approval. May I get a motion, Mr. Coviallo?
Make a motion to accept the resolution.
And a second by Mr. Pareda.
My second.
And a roll call on the resolution for this application.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Coviallo.
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester.
Yes.
Mr. Pareda.
Yes.
Ms. West Augustin.
Yes.
Mr. Deegan.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay, you're all set. We will have a formal document available for you, probably tomorrow or so. Okay, touch base with Connie at your convenience and we'll send it via email or snail mail.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Application 25008, the Carini residence located at 134 Gallinson Drive, Lot 3903, Lot 2. Folks, if you can come on up and Ms. Wolf will swear you in and we'll chat about your exciting part.
For the record, I did review the notice. It was sufficient to form content and timeliness, so the board does have jurisdiction to hear this case. With that, would you both raise your right hands? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And your name and address for the record. Manic Greening?
Garrett Greening.
134 Gallinson Drive. Thank you.
134 Gallinson.
Great. Thank you very much. And tell us what brings you before the zoning board this evening. It sounds like something, one or two items may have triggered a conversation with Tom Bocko. So why don't you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we want to expand our pavement patio and we want to put a shed in the backyard that we don't currently have. And then we want to put a louvered pergola on the expanded pavement patio.
Is the pergola open aired or is it slats?
It's a louvered pergola, so it's slats that can be opened or closed.
Okay, so you'll?
Yes, I mean they?
Use it in both ways.
Yeah, the company tells us to keep them open, you know, unless you need them shut, right?
And it considered impervious coverage, but you're building over a patio that exists, but we need to bump out and expand the patio a little bit to cover it. Okay, and now the area for the, is it a 96 square foot shed that you're interested in?
Yeah, I think eight by 12.
Eight by 12, 96, okay. And there's a little nook or a notch in the backyard, right? And that's the area, it looks like there's a vegetable garden or compost?
Yes.
Some area, and that's the desired area?
Yes, there's also, our neighbors behind us have a shed right on the other side of the fence and the ones to the left, right, so there's two sheds there already.
We appreciate the photographs because sometimes the photographs keep falling in, but I did notice the roof lines and in my opinion, it somewhat makes sense. But what were the setbacks that you desired? Because I know it's probably 12 and 15 in your area.
Yeah, and so we don't really want it to sit in the middle of the yard. So I think we're looking at five or more, five to six foot setback from, just that we can get around it, but we don't really want it sitting in the middle of the yard.
Now, if you peeked over the fence at the neighboring sheds, how far are they from the fence line?
Two feet.
Two or three feet, not 10 or 15 feet.
Right, the one in the back is maybe five, the one on the side is only a couple of feet.
So it's a tight nook over there. What street is behind?
Countryside.
Countryside. Ms. West, any questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Sylvester.
No.
Mr. Coviallo.
Not at this time.
Mr. Deegan.
None for me.
Mr. Pareda.
No, not yet.
I'd like to make a motion to open up the meeting to members of the public that have a question or comment regarding our application at 134 Gallinson. May I have a motion, Ms. West?
A motion to approve.
A motion, we're gonna open it up to members of the public.
May I have a motion, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And Mr. Sylvester?
My second.
The meeting is now open to members of the public that have a question or comment regarding this application. Seeing no one, may I have a motion to close, Mr. Deegan?
Make a motion to close.
And a second by Mr. Sylvester.
Second that motion.
I brushed it a little. The meeting is now closed to members of the public that have a question or comment.
I'm sorry, can I just ask who took these photographs?
I did.
And do you know when he took them?
It was raining maybe two weeks ago.
Okay, that's good enough for me, thank you.
The sun is not there anymore, thanks to Bolt Pickup.
Oh, there you go. I think the application makes sense. I think you are using the backyard as intended. You're under the threshold of the limits, the shed tucked in a nook where there are two other sheds mixed up. So I would be in favor of this application. May I get a motion on this, Ms. West?
A motion to approve.
Thank you. May I have a second by Mr. Pareda?
My second. A motion.
And it doesn't sound like we have very many?
No.
Conditions and minor stormwater management because we are expanding the impervious on the shed and the?
Any lighting? Any lighting proposed?
I think there's option to put it in the pergola itself, but?
But it would be like downward direction.
Yes, yeah.
Trees, any trees to be removed with your project? Would you like to install any trees? You're welcome.
At this time, no, but my son did bring one home from school.
There you go. My daughter planted one when she was in fourth grade and I was looking at it tonight before we left, so it's still. May I get a motion? May I have a? Roll call, please, Regina.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Coviallo.
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester.
Yes.
Mr. Pareda.
Yes.
Ms. West Augustin.
Yes.
Mr. Deegan.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Great, you're all set, so touch base with Connie. The resolution will be available middle of June and then we can move along. But I don't see any reason why you can't reserve the shed and then start planning, but install the day after the ink dries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Application 25001. Take a step outside. Sir, are you with an application?
He's with us. He's with me.
Oh, okay. He's okay. Do you want to sit at the adult bench?
Exactly.
Here's that extra one.
That's seven.
Yeah.
A lot of boards are at 7:30.
We use to be 7:30.
I checked the notice to see if it's at 7:30. It says seven.
Yeah, we moved, we started just in January, moved in at seven.
Move at seven, got you done, sir. I actually have, one of my boards, they tried. One of the guys, he's like, well, can we do it at like 6:00?
All right, settle down now.
Forget it. You lose so many board members because nobody could get there.
Yeah.
I like 7:30 because then I can actually eat dinner with my kids. I can't eat.
Get a break.
Where are you? Yeah, you're there.
We've never met in person. I only see you as square.
This guy's been quiet everywhere. I was talking to Campbell yesterday, he said not much happening.
No, not much. We have like two applications.
Folks, we have 45 chairs available. Take anyone.
Is there one that won't hurt my back, do you think?
Let me see what we can do. I have to find out. There's usually tennis balls at the bottom, but in the spirit of tonight's session?
It might look like a compliment. We appreciate that. Are you ready for us, Mr. Chair?
We are ready when you are and we will introduce your application as 25001. Gina Tennis World located at 649 Springfield Avenue, Block 503, Lot 1, located in the township's DD Zone. Council, if you can introduce your team, what we'd like to do tonight is listen to your testimony, have the members of your team make their presentations and then following, we'll have our planner and our engineer on board to answer any questions and provide their reports and then we will open it up to them.
Certainly. Good plan, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you having us here tonight. For the record, Larry Calley on behalf of the applicant, GTWBH LLC. I'll set the stage, Mr. Chair, as we just discussed, as to what we hope to accomplish here tonight, what we seek before the board and who you'll hear from shortly. By way of brief background, then I'm gonna try to kill a minute or two because our engineer is en route and he's one of our earlier witnesses. So I normally talk very fast. I'll talk just regular fast at this point with the chair. The property, for the record, it's 649 Springfield Avenue. I know the board is familiar with it. It's the nice tennis court use that's been here for over 40 years in town, Block 503, Lot 1, about 2.3 acres in total, parking area to the rear and our structures up front. It used to be appended to the Aquatic Club structure which has been raised. It's not there any longer. The applicant owns that property right now and the proposal is to develop on that site right now where the Aquatic Club had previously been. And we're on the corner of Springfield and Passaic, as you folks know, in the downtown development zoning district. So the existing use indoor tennis facility, we have off-street parking areas and there's related accessory improvements around the property that are associated with that use. The abutting site, like I mentioned, it is raised as of right now, is the former Aquatic Club, the Berkeley Aquatic Club, which has been under ownership of this applicant for about five years now, since about 2021. They were trying to develop a plan and you'll hear from our operator shortly, trying to develop a plan as to what they could do with that, whether or not it was growth, whether or not it was relocate. And they decided they wanted to stay here and be a presence here for more time to come. They've been here for four decades and they want to keep going. The addition, you'll hear from our architect in more detail, but it's a two-story addition to the structure for an additional tennis court. The goal here is not enhanced membership of students. The goal here is to let our current membership spread out, have a little more room, offer a little bit more to our existing students. The goal here is not exponential growth, sort of at max right now because we have limited number of teachers and professionals to train the students. So the idea is the additional tennis court for enhanced use by our existing members. The operator will speak to that shortly. We've got some relief, Mr. Chair and members. As you know, that's where we're at the Board of Adjustment. We've got use variance relief here. This use was previously approved by the board in 1975. Very limited resolution, didn't say much, but it was a grant of approval going back that far for the tennis court use on the property, which brings jurisdiction back to this board, of course, because the use is not principally permitted in the zone. We're expanding that use, so we're here tonight for that use variance releasing. There's also some ancillary bulk variance relief. Our engineer will get into that in more detail. Our planner will justify, but there's some limited bulk variance relief too. The good thing is, is impervious coverage is not going up to a point where it's not compliant. Building coverage is not going to the point where it's not compliant. You often have hand-in-hand use variance ties into, well, you're overbuilding. You have too much massing, you have too much coverage, you have too much building. That's not the case here. We're still under the ordinance requirements for those coverage requirements. But there is some ancillary bulk relief that will be sought this evening, Mr. Chair and members. You'll hear from five witnesses. You'll hear from Gina Genovese, the owner and principal of the applicant entity. She's been a presence here along with Wendy McHale for many years on the property. Gina will walk everybody through the genesis of the existing use, what we do here today, how they came to acquire the site from Berkeley Aquatic, how they got to the point of developing it for that proposed enhancement of the tennis club and what you'll see tomorrow, the net change, which as you'll see is relatively limited from what happens today by way of operations as to what will happen tomorrow if approved by way of operations. Our civil engineer, the scrivener of record from Whitman is Larry Murphy. Larry will walk everybody through the civil engineering site plans, the proposed improvements, the delta of relief on the bulk dimensional metrics that apply. We have our project architect with us as well, Adel Rafat. He will testify as to the proposed structure. It's a prefab steel structure. It's gonna be in keeping with what you have today. It's gonna be a lot nicer looking than the swim club structure, which was in disrepair and in need of some help and resurrection. But it's gonna be in line with what has been here for 40 years and our project architect will testify as to that. We have our traffic engineer with us. You know, the net change here is exponentially lowered from the swim club user. However, we wanted to be prudent. We wanted this board to have the full picture of the relief and what we need and what will and won't happen on this site. So our project traffic engineer will testify as to the impacts occasioned by this proposal if it was approved and implemented on the property. And lastly, Mr. Chair and members, we'll hear from our project planner. We have relief. It's relief that's in keeping with the existing conditions on a property, but relief nonetheless, or our project planner will walk the board through the variance proofs and justifications when we get there.
Right.
Okay? If no question, Mr. Chair and members, we're glad to get started with our first witness.
I do have a question, just for clarification, because the board members may not have experienced the condo-style setup. Can you just explain how the ownership works in this parcel? Because it's rather unique.
Yeah, certainly. So when you condo a building, it's usually, there's fiscal reasons for it. It's one tax lot, right? It's one tax lot. But you know, sometimes I'll liken it to something that everybody does know. You're driving in a shopping center and there's a pad site McDonald's off in the pad somewhere, right? Oftentimes, that McDonald's or that fast food restaurant is its own lot, its own tax lot. It's been subdivided for fiscal reasons or it's a condo lot. Usually, it's ways to leverage properties to have different end users and owners. This is the case here with this property. There are three condo lots on this property. This applicant owns two of those three. The one they do not own and control is the retail store along the frontage and the abutting small parking area there. So the lion's share of what has been condoed here, which is essentially carved up a single structure and a single tax lot for varied ownership in a way that the law and town recognizes insofar as tax assessment and tax collection goes. But beyond that, it's one lot. You don't see anything other than one property functioning as one. You see different entities, different businesses on that property. But the condoing is how each owner has acquired their fiefdom of that portion of the connected parcel, much in the same way as you would see the quick-serve restaurant, looks like it's in the parking lot and part of the Trader Joe Shopping Center, but it's technically not, legally speaking. It's its own little owner. I don't think I explained it, Mr. Chairman, but it's a little nuanced. It plays into the application when you have a zoning application insofar as we talk about parking demand. Sometimes there's condo documents, here there are not, where the condo documents will say, well, that doctor's office, he can't use my spaces. I know he's gonna want 30. He's got 10. He cannot use my 15. And then you go in for a doctor's office expansion and we say, we're adding, you know, three more doctors and two more rooms, or we're gonna start dializing patients, but where are they gonna park? They're gonna park over there. No, they're not. The condo restricts that. That's when you often see zoning interplay with condo. Here, we have total site control over our parking area, which can park our use. We have total control over our two condo lots, which is our structure, the addition of the parking lot. Those are our two condo lots. None of what we're doing relates to the third condo lot, which I'll describe as the retail portion down below on Springfield.
Okay. Well, we look forward to hearing your application and please bring on you first.
We appreciate you having us. We're very excited to be here. Our first witness will be our project operator and owner of the property, Gina Genovese.
Ms. Genovese, would you raise your right hand, as well as our board professionals? Do you also swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And your name and address?
Gina Genovese, 52 Hilltop Road, Millington, New Jersey. So anyway, in 1971, my parents moved to Berkeley Heights and that's how long I was in this town. And I started Gina's Tennis World in 1983, so that's 42 years ago. And I'm really happy to tell you that I'm one of the oldest businesses now in Berkeley Heights that's still running. I think there's DiMeos and there's Halls and then there's me, so I'm very, very proud of that. It's been quite a run. My tennis club has two courts and we run from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM and we're usually September 15th to June 15th. We offer clinics, we offer lessons, we offer open play, so people can just rent the court and we've been doing that for 42 years. It's really, we also do like five-year-olds to 92-year-olds. I have a 92-year-old client who still comes in once a week and it's really a family business. We teach the parents, we teach the kids and pretty much everybody knows everyone. And I know I don't look it, but almost teaching my third generation of students. I've taught their second generation and now I'm close to teaching their third generation, so I'm quite proud of that. How this came to be is that I was next to the Aquatic Club for like 32 years, Berkeley Aquatic Club, and they moved to New Providence. And when they moved to New Providence, Jim Wood still wanted to have control of his property. He rented it out, leased it out a little bit and then unfortunately, Jim Wood passed away. And when Jim Wood passed away, as you can see in the drawings, these properties are intertwined. They're right on top of each other, including the parking lot. And so I decided that I wanted to have this property and I bought it from his estate. And what happened after that, this is five years ago. We hired, we worked with a couple of commercial realtors and we were looking at daycare, we were looking at medical, we were looking at restaurants and all the things that you could do there. And after a couple of years, it just did not feel well, did not sit well to us, that what we were going to do. And we just came to the conclusion that we wanted to just expand. Let's put in a third court. We have the clientele and it's exactly what we've been doing. And it's just, it was the natural progression of my business, which I didn't really truly understand at first. But since we've made this decision, this is why I'm here today, that we just wanted to add one more court and just offer more services to all of our clients. We also have 80% of our clients, I would say, are not from Berkeley Heights. And a good thing is, is we're bringing people in from the outside that shop here and go to your stores and that's always been a plus for me, that it's a shared benefit to all of us. So for me, this is a really, really great next step.
Well, thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
We'll defer cross-examining questions to the chairman next to plane. Okay, very good. So Adel, I'll bring up our project architect next to walk the board through the programming. We'll take you through the existing conditions, the proposed conditions, floor and elevations. What you'll see, Mr. Chair and members, is by and large going to be the documents that were filed. We might mark it exhibit here or there. This will be marked, this rendering shortly. We'll start speaking to it, we'll identify it and we'll mark them sequentially as we go, Amanda.
Okay, so you have it, okay.
You have that color rendering and that, okay, so it's still, we'll mark that one. We may have some photos we might share and we have some material boards, which are always fun for board retention post-hearing, so. There'll be some bricks when you're done, give it numbers.
And Mr. Rafat, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Your name and address?
Adel Rafat, 45 Woodledge Road, Washington, New Jersey.
Can you spell your last name?
R.I.F.L.K. Frank.A.A.T.
So, depending upon the board, your background, experience and professional credentials and licensing, please?
I'm a New Jersey and New York State licensed architect since 1990, I think.
License is currently standing in the state of Jersey?
Yep.
And you prepared the plans in connection with this application?
I did.
And we accept the architect professional. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Adele, you're in my profit of the board as to what brings us here. You heard Gina's background and the genesis of what brings us here for the expansion application. If you wouldn't mind walking the board through the existing conditions that we have at a relatively high level because they're there and I'm sure the board is relatively familiar with the existing conditions, and then we can dive into the proposed conditions.
So there, it's, the site was, um, the old Berkeley Aquatic, which was a pool, which was demolished and the pool was filled in. And, um, in its place, we proposed to add a tennis court. So from the beginning, the idea was to try and have as little impact on the site as possible. So we tried to, or we did build the building inside the footprint of the old Berkeley Aquatic and use as much of what was there as possible in terms of footings and foundations. We also made the building shorter. We didn't need to go all the way. It was, I think, a hundred and fifty some odd foot long building. We used a hundred and twenty, which is the minimum um, that you need for a tennis court. Um, as far as the volume of the building, the same thing. We tried to just make it as low as possible. Um, so the inside dimension typically for a tennis court, minimum is around twenty-nine and a half feet. We, we vary between thirty and twenty-seven, um, at the net because the, the roof is pitching um, kind of across the net, uh, parallel to the net rather than perpendicular to the net.
So is the plan to continue the roof line that exists at the existing center through the new court? Is there a change in the roof line or is it?
We, we can't, um, align the ridges just because the way the bulk building footprint is, but essentially, yes, the, the pitch of the roof currently is the, is, would be this, it's not at the same pitch, but it would be pitching in the same direction as the current building.
And the height, is, is there?
I, I.
Of the new structure?
Yes. I tried to keep the ridge at the same elevation as the existing. You know, within inches, I mean, when we go to build it, but that's the intent, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so that was, um, that was the intent as far as, uh, site, sighting and the volume of the building. Um, as far as the elevations go, it's, it's a prefabricated steel building. So we're somewhat limited in the palette, um, that we have available to us, but having said that, we, we, um, had feedback, Gina and Wendy had feedback from the beautification committee. I was sending them elevations, um, that they were getting feedback on. And, and what you see is basically incorporates their commentary back to me. Um, some of which was, so we, we always had a base to the building, which, um, is one of the standards, um, in your design guideline for the, for the downtown area. So we were able to do that. Um, we decided to change, change, uh, um, colors in, in banding. Uh, we're using metal panels that have seams and, and we created seams at heights that would then give horizontal striation because the, the trim piece that will cover that, that butt joint is a different color than the panel. So the idea was to try and break up the volume of the building as much as we could. Um, so we did that horizontally and then vertically, the, the gutters, uh, the leaders, sorry, will also be a different color than the panels so that you get, at least try and break up the mess, um, that we have. Um, having said that, the building's pretty well blocked from Springfield as well by the retail buildings. You don't have, uh, you know, the, it's lim, there's a very limited amount of the building that gets seen. I think the rendering kind of shows that. I think that's all I have for the.
You said it's about correspondence with the beautification committee. I mean, the only letter that we have is June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. So do you have anything that, even in correspondence with them that helped pick out the colors, right? Because that's a big piece of this from the downtown beautification committee, making sure emitting new matches.
I don't have anything from them. I just got all my information from Wendy and Gina that, yeah. I, I mean, I, I didn't correspond with them. Gina and Wendy were, I was giving them elevations, they were taking them and getting feedback and reporting back to me and I was incorporating those comments. So.
Adele, the floor plan, just real quick before, before we let you rest and I'm sure the board will have questions after for you. But in addition to the court that we're adding, we're adding a residential unit. Can you briefly touch on that as well?
Yes, there's a caretaker's unit, um, in what was the waiting area on the second floor of the, of the pool building. Um, and that is getting, uh, renovated into a, a six hundred and sixty square foot, uh, apartment. One-bedroom unit, yeah, or the caretaker, yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, that's on the second floor plan, which is, I think, sheet A five that you have.
Yeah, I'm sure the board saw, but I wanted to make sure we have a record. In addition to the tennis court improvements.
Yes.
We've got that, that's.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's the, the apartment. There's also a storage room at the level of the court and a bathroom, an accessible bathroom.
Is this structure, the new structure ADA compliant?
Yes.
And the, the color scheme, whatever it is, will the, the new structure match the old structure, the existing structure? Or are there going to be two different colors?
They're not exact matches.
They're not exactly.
No. I mean, I have samples that I can.
I, I'm just curious of how the transition is going to work from the existing structure to the new structure. You know, is, is that, does that stand out? Like, is the old, like, you know, you need to blend the old.
Yeah, I think they're in the same, they're earth tones essentially, the two, the, the existing building and the proposed. Sounds in the metal panels, at least what you'll be seeing at the base, it's more like of a stone look. So that's just like, uh, materially.
Color or actual?
In texture also.
We'll have to start introducing.
Yeah, I mean.
Do you have, do you have any, I, I know we've got tons of, uh, site plans. Are, are there any, other than the one, look, yeah, are there any color renderings of what the structure is going to look like at, at the end of the?
No, we have, this, this.
This is it.
This, this render, Mr. Chairman, and then we have material bullets we could pass around.
And, and it'll look the same if I'm in the parking, the upper parking lot?
Correct, correct, correct.
Yeah, it could be partially.
Correct. If, if you look at the elevations, it, it actually called out the colors and you'll see that they're the same as you go around the building.
Adele, before, to touch off the chairman's point, which is a good question, a good point. As an architect, if you try to exactly match prefab to prefab, my guess is it wouldn't work. Is that correct?
Not, not, I mean, that, I can tell you that the color that's there now, I'm sure, doesn't exist uh, in a, in a prefabricated steel building.
So the goal is to, for design perspective?
Get clo, get close, yeah, get close. So we're, as I said.
I would imagine over the, as it, has the structure been there for forty years, was that?
Yes, it's been there, oh, probably about, about fifty years.
Okay, so the structure's fifty years. So it's been in the, that structure has been in the sun for fifty years.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to just, what we're trying to avoid is new, old, you know, try to.
And I think the applicants as well.
Maybe misgender each other.
Yeah.
We are planning on painting that to match.
Okay, so, so it will blend, yeah.
I think the interests are very much aligned here. They don't want it to look like that, I, that star contrast. We're glad to pass around the samples. I know it's sometimes a nightmare for a board. I, I was just representing the board. We had a shopper and we had thirty bricks going around the room. I know that I like that, but we're glad to introduce these and sequentially mark them, Mr. Chairman, so you can actually see what.
Please do it. If you could just mark them and tell us what each one is and I, I would imagine the gray is at the bottom, the beige is at the top.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I'll do that and then.
Yeah, so describe, describe what we're looking at, then I'll start passing around the board after we mark it.
So this is the texture of the upper metal panel. Um, and I'll, and I'll find, I have to actually, I'm going to have to find the color and I'll get that to you, but just make sure it.
Upper metal panel texture, it's kind of smoother than, I'll mark this A one.
Yeah, it's called shadow line, so it's kind of a subtle. This is the, the texture of the bottom panel. And this is the color of the bottom panel.
So it's more stucco than a.
It's more, yeah, more a stucco, yeah, yeah.
Exhibit A two and A three?
A two and A three. We'll do A two as the larger board, A three as the color.
They, they call it granite stone, so.
Thank you.
I'm going to have to check my drawings to make sure I'm saying, telling which color is what on these. Sandstone is on my drawings, but somebody has to look and tell me what that, uh, whether, I think that's the, um, that's the upper panel. So, okay, so sandstone. Is this, so that'll be the color of the upper panel.
Color of the upper panel will come around now. We'll mark this as A four. And then. Wall panel board called sandstone.
When you were before the beautification committee, did they have any, did you show them these samples?
Since, I think, since they were.
Yeah, we, we, we sent them to them. We sent them, we emailed them.
Stucco is supposed to be somewhat limited.
Yeah.
Well, it's just the base, right?
It's at the base.
It's at the base.
Well, according to the, the rendering, it looks like it's about half the.
It looks like it's half wet. Take, take a peek at the rendering.
Well, at the end it is, but not, if it's not here, it's not going to be.
Well, yeah, no, on the Springfield Avenue side, that's correct, but as you go around to the parking lot side, the grade is changing.
Right, but that's, I'm sorry, the town's going to see.
But, yeah, yeah, no, you're right, you're right.
The exposure from, traveling from west to east, where that opening is on this photograph, you see the, the gray area, which is stucco, is, is a significant portion of this.
Correct, correct.
That, that's what, that's what we're a little bit hung up on because it, it goes against the grain of the rules that govern the borough a bit as far as the Design Nineteen, Design Standards. Is that correct, Mr.?
Nineteen five five.
Mr. Atkins. Design Standard Stucco, can you provide a comment on the limits of stucco?
Well, well, I want to grab.
Well, Mr. Atkins, we'll, we'll get back to you, but yeah, let's.
I was going to, yeah, I'm going to interrupt, but while Dave's looking at that. The applicant is certainly amenable and flexible to working with the town. They love the town. They're a big presence here. They will continue to be. If they can find a material in this world and doesn't have that cladding where it looks like that stucco coarse material, they're glad to adapt it and modify it. You will hear from our civil engineer, the significant landscaping that's already here. This render doesn't do the existing landscape injustice nor the improvements. You're not going to see most of this, right? Which is not usually what we want to hear. You'd like to see buildings, but you will not see much of this. I will let our engineer testify to that. I don't want to give any testimony on proffering, but you will not see a lot of this. We are glad to work with the beautification committee further to have this finished material have a different feel or appearance as needed to deviate from the stucco world as much as we can.
So I just want to say that this was the masonry style finish that was available in a metal panel. So that's why we, that's why we offered it. Um, all right, so this is, this dove gray is the, is the trims and the, and the leaders.
For color purposes.
It's, it's what makes the differentiation horizontally and vertically.
A five, Amanda, or A six? A five is a color sample of dove gray, which would be the trim. So that's all the trim colors, the, the leaders, the soffits, the banding?
Yes, correct. Yeah, it's, it's the banding and the leaders. I don't remember what I did on the leaders, to be honest with you. So it, it, it's all spelled out on my drawings, though.
Last thing, Adele, maybe what we do is, we've got some photos. Maybe we could pass around. I know the board is familiar with what was here before we raised the structure that we acquired. But maybe passing it around, reminding the board as to what we raised and what was here. Might be helpful. So we've got, we've got, I, I can get this, we got, you can describe it.
Yeah.
Two photo boards, three photos on each taken by the applicant of prior conditions when the swim club structure was still there before it was going to fall down if we didn't take it down. We'll mark this as A six and A seven.
Do you want to differentiate between the photo board?
Sure. Do you want to just make it A six? A, A six, A six shows rear parking lot side. A seven shows street side and an elevation looking at the corner down to the corner of Springfield and Passaic. So A seven is more street looking up from the corner and down from the corner and the retail. A six is rear.
Who took these photographs?
The applicant.
And you know when?
Oh, the structure was still there, so.
Yeah.
Approximately when?
Probably spring of, of that year, yeah.
The past twelve months, it would take. Do you want to describe these?
Yeah, so this is the Berkeley Aquatic. Um, it's a masonry wall building with roof trusses and asphalt chingles. Um, and the block was in bad shape and painted, but, uh, fairly dilapidated, which you can see in the photos.
We could pass those around, Adele, since maybe we'll see them from this distance. Adele, before we let you rest for now, I want to make sure that we're not boxing our, our applicant into a corner with the materials. We can endeavor to work with the manufacturer to identify something that appears less stucco in nature, staying in this world of color that we intend to. Do you anticipate being able to do that?
Yeah, yes. I mean, I, well, I just, I can't say right now, to be honest. I really can't. I mean, I'm hoping that they have something that's a smooth texture.
I think maybe the stipulation would be that the, the downtown beautification committee and the applicant must get together to find something that fits, right? If, if the, from a look perspective, if they're, if they're good with it.
I just don't want to promise something that's not made.
You get with the downtown beautification committee, the applicant get together and they both agree on something that's available? Then that's. Similar to landscape implementation, where it says we want thirty trees. We don't know what kind, but work with our arborist, we'll figure it out. And if, if all else fails, we'll come back and say hi to you folks again one night and we'll, we'll talk about.
Sure, we'll find a reasonable solace.
I have no doubt, Mr. Chairman, that you folks.
Plus the, you know, there, there is vegetation planned.
There is, which helps.
The sides of the stores. The stores that abut the building, what are the side, what is the side of the store?
That's brick.
Is brick on the side too? Not, I don't.
No, not on the side.
What is, what's the side?
It's just stucco, it's plaster, plaster painted.
There is yellow stucco along Bordeaux Grill and a couple of Domino's and.
Yeah, that, that predates the, yeah, it's changed.
Yeah, that was Mark Statler, does he still own that portion of the condo? Okay.
No, he does not.
Okay.
We're willing to stipulate a move to grind down the stucco in the dark of the night, Mr. Chairman, that's fine.
Chairman, I believe stucco is allowed.
But within a taller, uh, within.
I haven't found the amount, but it does say that stucco is allowed, so it is allowed material. Okay, I'll continue browsing through here.
Okay.
I mean, you would think because it's already on those buildings, that's why.
Yeah. And I know the board understands the applicant's trying to work with.
Absolutely.
They have and they'll continue to do so, so we appreciate the feedback from them as well and we'll do what we can. Right, so for the question, for Adele at this point, we'll, we'll.
Let, let's keep it moving. We'll move on to your next professional and we'll reserve time for the public, the board professionals and the board members for Q and A. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next witness is Larry Murphy. Larry is identified as a scriptural record of the civil engineering plans that you have on file. I suspect Larry will be referencing his filed plans for the evening, so probably nothing to mark. Um, Larry, we'll get you sworn in and qualified momentarily.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And your name and address?
Lawrence Murphy, five-two-six U.S. Highway two oh six, Trenton, New Jersey, zero eight six one zero.
Larry, briefly, for the benefit of the board, your, your background, credentials, um, academic and licensing experience, please?
Sure. I'm a licensed, uh, professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I graduated Rutgers University with a bachelor's degree in science. I've been practicing civil engineering for twenty-nine years with a focus on land development applications such as this one for twenty-seven. I've been qualified as an expert, uh, twenty-seven plu, uh, sorry, hundred plus, a couple hundred times at this point. And I designed the Walgreens in town.
License is in good standing.
Yes.
Is there stucco on the Walgreens?
There is, Brandon.
All right.
There was, there was a big conversation, you know, about the foam sign. And the sign, it was a foam, it was presented to, this was a planning board application. It was presented to the planning board as a foam backing and it was converted into a wood carved. And I think it went back to a different style right now, but that's beyond me.
But there was, there was a, a fair amount of dialogue regarding the freestanding sign on the.
Uh, yeah, often inside.
Thank you very much. We accept it and please continue.
Thank you.
Larry, before you arrive, we have a meeting to use the application. I described at a high level that you would walk the board through the bearings delta of the bulk relief and we'll identify. We're going to defer discussion to our planner, but, um, would you please walk the board through the conditions existing and proposed that we could identify relief along the way as we describe those conditions?
Absolutely. So the site is fully developed, uh, excluding the demolition of the, the pool building, which was demoed for the purpose of this application. So the fight's site is fully developed with a parking lot, hundred and ten parking spaces, deficient, uh, handicap accessibility and number of handicap spaces on site, handicap path. And you have two access points, one on Springfield Avenue, which services condo unit C, which is the retail. And a driveway on Passaic Avenue for the rear building, which services condo A and B. It has three frontages, Washington Street, Passaic Street, uh, Springfield Avenue. There's substantial existing vegetation on site that screens the existing building, existing parking lot from the residences. So it's a well-established site. Uh, for the, so for the purpose of this, uh, site plan engineering, it's fairly simple. We're doing the least amount possible to disturb the vegetation, disturb the parking lot. And what we're trying to do is bring several things up to code. So the existing building that was there is shrinking, increasing the setback to Passaic Avenue to fifty-two point eight feet. Uh, provoke, proposing a twenty-five foot setback to Springfield Avenue. And one of the largest challenges was actually getting ADA to work. Um, ADA can't work through the existing, uh, main door because there's no, um, elevator. There's no, uh, ADA access down. Uh, the finished floor is actually set approximately ten feet below the parking lot. So that's a tremendous amount of drop to, um, to work through in terms of pathway from an ADA perspective to get ADA access. So a large amount of expense has been spent upgrading this to provide handicap accessibility to the tennis court. And also, as the architect mentioned, an existing portion of the building is being converted from a waiting room to a tennis pro or onsite manager's, uh, apartment. The next biggest area that's being developed is really the parking lot, which is to restripe and to increase the number of ADA parking spaces to comply. There's eighty-five spaces in the back, twenty-three spaces in the front. There's, we're proposing four parking, four handicap parking spaces in the rear, which complies with federal, uh, standards for the minimum number of ADA spaces. There's one existing space in the front parking lot. Uh, and that is, you know, not part of. And that is, you know, not part of, not part of this condo unit A and B. And we're also provo- proposing two E V spaces and designing them a one according to be able to accept a handicap parking space, which is the the new set of, I guess, the modified standard. It's not striped as handicap, but it's been sized for handicap eleven five eleven. And those are the the main improvements as part of this. It's really an adaptive reuse of a of a site to make a new building work and bring it up to current code as part of the process of going through the town township.
Are you adding E V charging as well or just the spot provision?
We're adding E V charging spaces. The detail shows the, we're bringing the wire, we're actually installing the units. The units are described and it's, it's actually a juice box pro or equal with, you know, ground mount juice box stand. It's a nice unit.
And how will that be segmented from general population of somebody just pulling in and making use of that?
Well, we wouldn't force any type of trespass, you know, like we're doing them everywhere on on first line properties, you know, apartment buildings and you sometimes get just, you know, someone coming in looking to effectively steal. It's site management, the property has cameras, there'll probably be any more cameras once there's more structure and more blind spots. And then, you know, if needed, there could always be intervention with the P D, the applicant, the relation with the police department, but it's it's management. If somebody's coming to charge there and they know about that parking lot, maybe they live too far from home. You would think that if they're there using it, they're juicing up, they're they're a student. But it's going to take eyes and education from staff.
You also can add in a code or it's scanned and it's a per fee for certain people. So there's lots of ways to discourage use if you want to discourage use.
Have you got more general questions?
Yeah. But as an E V driver, don't restrict it, please.
A private diesel truck, so I could be pretty far away from.
Yeah, I can lend you one. I'll I'll convert you eventually. So the, so the new building itself substantially complies with all bulk requirements. It meets the front yard setback of both streets. There are existing nonconformities of the existing retail that do not meet, we're not taking that building down, nor do we own that condo unit. Therefore, we can't do anything about that existing nonconformity. There's also an existing nonconformity to the side slash, the the side setback, which we can't change. We're reducing building coverage, we're reducing other coverage, we're reducing total lot coverage. So overall, the total development is decreasing because we're reducing the size of the the building. We will need a variance for other lot coverage, which is thirty five percent. We're reducing it down from forty one point nine to thirty eight point seven. And we comply with lot coverage and building coverage. This building does comply with the minimum building height and the maximum building height. This is thirty point five five. The rest of the buildings are existing, we're not changing those. So that's an existing nonconformity that's going to continue.
Can you imagine your reference date, open the letter dated February nineteen twenty twenty five, right?
Correct, yeah. And from a, we're proposing a trash enclosure, some streetscape improvements on Springfield Avenue along the frontage of our condo unit, which entails new pavers, lighting and a very short wall, a very, was very careful, pushed back just to make sure that we weren't going too far back, because as you go back into a slope and you're building a wall, you start to need to cut in and you're undermining the slope and disturbing that existing vegetation. So we were very protective about that. Our goal is not to touch anything on the slope, not remove any existing vegetation. We have some landscaping that's proposed, some trees, some shrubbery. The intent is to field locate that where it's needed to fill in the buffer and not disturb the existing slope. We're also proposing two signs.
You talk about the pavers, that's the sidewalk we're talking about?
Yeah, the the streetscape requirements, the pavers along our frontage that along our condo frontage, separate from condo C's frontage. And we're proposing a two-sided monument sign at the intersection of Springfield and Passaic. That's going to be, that's proposed to be placed eleven foot off of Passaic, nine foot off of Springfield. There's a sight line there, sight triangle there with a sight line. We're going to likely field locate that to make sure the sight line's good. It may require field meeting with the township engineer or board, board engineer to exactly locate that, so it doesn't obstruct.
And what are the dimensions of that freestanding sign?
That sign is a total of ten square feet, a ten point six seven square feet, it's fifty three inches high and.
That fifty three from grade?
It's from gray.
Grade to the top of the post.
Gray to the top of the sign, which is probably the top of the post, which is pretty close. And it's a forty eight by thirty two inch sign. So it's a, it's a small sign, it's, it's going to be lighted with L E D solar lights, two per side, directed up. Made sure that there's no glare to traveling motorists, that's going to be field aligned to, you know, make make sure. And then there's a second sign and I'm going to call it a wayfinding sign, which is at the driveway on Passaic Avenue. And it's a one-sided sign, just to let people know, this is the driveway, turn in. It's a, that's a very small sign. That is. That's a twenty inch by forty two, sorry, twenty inch by thirty inch sign, forty two inches off the ground. It's about four square feet.
Is there some type of directional sign that exists on Passaic today?
No.
Like a bleached, a bleached sign?
Yeah, there's something, it's like a business line or something.
Like do not maybe en- enter here or there's not a sign that.
There's no branding on it, right?
There's never been.
No, not branding, but there's some type of, there's not a directional sign up on that?
I thought there was a sign that said like enter or something.
Enter slowly.
Oh, enter slow, yeah. Yeah, 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 it was.
But with with all the vegetation and the it being set back, it's hard to identify that there is a use back there without that proposed sign.
Larry, I know the signs are modest, but to give a perspective, you can illustrate in the room, one of them is smaller than this mountain site plan sheet and one is less than a foot larger in either dimension.
Yeah, this is twenty four by thirty six, which is six square feet. So the wayfinding is four. The other one is
Foot wider.
A foot wider, it's three by, it's probably about that. It's very modest. So you you, it's really, that's really a wayfinding sign. Also, it's, this is a destination, people know, you know, we're Gina's, it has been for forty two, twenty two years? Forty two years, it's been a long time. And having said that, it's been in operation for forty two years. They haven't had site issues for forty two years. So they've, they've, so this is not a new application where they haven't figured out how to do snow, how to light, what their customers need, what the parking requirement is, what the parking demand is. We're going from a pool proposed, sorry, an existing pool that was knocked down, which has a higher higher parking demand and higher traffic, you know, customer flow versus a tennis court. And if anyone plays tennis, the most you can have is four people for doubles. And then at the turnover, you have four more people coming to replace those. And if you're interested, you can come and watch as a visitor too, but I doubt there's that many visitors coming. So there's, it's not a high demand, high traffic and highly used. It's a going, is reducing the intensity development of the site by going from a pool, which you could have fifty, sixty people down to four additional.
It's fairly modest, so what are we seeking the variance? What is, what's calling for variance on those little signs?
Variance, I believe, I'll confirm, I think quantitatively, two, yeah, it's it's two proposed total signs.
Not a part of that?
Ready, I'm looking at Passaic Street as a directional wayfinding.
Wayfinding.
I mean, you have banks that have multiple arrows pointing to the drive.
Present most of it, there's a million signs, it's awful.
Why I was asking.
Two, two technically proposed freestanding signs, code allows one, so that's the delta.
Yeah.
Yeah, technically, technically the freestanding nature of it is, is, and maybe with belt and suspenders, us calling it out, but we think it might be relief, so we want to make sure the board is seeking it.
And we're, as part of this, we're proposing three building mounted signs that are L E D, fifteen foot high, three freestanding signs that are L E D also, and then two streetscape signs that are compliant with the streetscape requirements. And we'll agree to have L E D controls to adjust those as needed, to be sensitive.
And where are those signs proposed?
Not signs, lights, 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 they're, they're very close to the, there are three are on the building.
Right.
One on the south side for the required egress, one on the west side for required egress, one on the north side to illuminate walkways and then three parking lot lights to illuminate the.
What is your opinion of illumination spilling onto the neighboring Washington Street and Passaic Street residential homes?
We don't want that, that's in fact what we want to keep it as dim as possible. So the applicant was undertaking efforts with with Mr. Murphy's office to give enough lighting so the people act, get on safe and off safe, but not too much where it's overkill and we're creating disturbance to the neighbors. Because the applicant has had discussions with the neighbors previously, going back a number of years relative to site lighting. And the applicant is incredibly mindful and aligned with those neighbors, we didn't want too much. And what works out well is that Larry can testify to this and our traffic engineer, the traffic domain is so low. Most of our people, all of our park relatively close to the building, we don't need it like Yankee Stadium, the back end of that parking lot. We'd rather not have it that way if we can avoid it.
And the the existing vegetation is remaining in place along Washington and Passaic?
Right, correct.
The fence that exists there appears to be a chain link with with slats in. Is the fence remaining or will that fence be improved?
It's new.
It's a new fence.
It's new, everyone likes the fence and.
No, I was up, I was up in the lot today and it blends in very well with the neighborhood and the the existing tree line. I was just curious, I didn't know how new the fence was.
It's new and it's supposed to remain.
And the vegetation is really, the vegetation is really the buffer.
In the event that there are any gaps in vegetation as a condition of resolution, we may ask to incorporate some of this. If there's any gaps, you know, and just to to do as much as we can along Washington Avenue and Passaic.
The neighbors tell us.
Okay.
We put in like four shrubs for them.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
And the and the more vegetation we put in, the harder it's going to be able to see the building, thus the greater need for that wayfinding sign. Thank you. That's what I have.
Any maybe questions for you after, so?
Thank you for joining us, Sam.
Thank you.
Going to get very excited now, Mr. Chairman, we're going to do some traffic.
We are ready.
I promise to be very quick.
Raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your name and address?
Name's Craig Peregoi, P E R E G O Y, business address two forty five Main Street, Chester, New Jersey.
Craig, your license and credentials, please.
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech, licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. And I testify pretty much on a nightly basis in front of planning and zoning boards. Last time I testified in Berkeley Heights was in the old building and this is much nicer.
We had a change prior to COVID, but thank you very much for joining us and we accept this professional day.
Craig, I will let you get off to the right front, I know you've reviewed the site and the impacts and I know you've got some thoughts on it.
Yeah, sure, I mean, obviously, we're not, there's not a huge change in the user. You had the pool there before and now the tennis court, so it's an athletic training sort of facility, so that's the same. The difference is, is Mr. Murphy mentioned, you can fit a lot more people in a pool than can effectively play tennis. So just from a common sense standpoint, less people is less cars and less traffic. I got some information from our applicant, forty two years there, so much better than any of the traffic engineering data that I can dig up. Per court, you may have four to five cars come in and out, they run like every hour and a half. So a worst case scenario, you have five parents come in to drop off kids while five come to pick up the previous class and then they all leave. So you have ten cars in, ten cars out in an hour at most. That's twenty vehicle trips. As traffic engineers, we do a traffic study or get concerned about traffic when you're at a hundred or more trips. So even the worst case scenario, when the perfect storm of all those parents picking up and dropping off, you're well below that number. The pool obviously had swim, you know, meets on weekends, they'd have, you know, seven or eight hundred cars in and out of that place during the weekend. So none of that's going to happen now. So obviously, you're looking at a little bit less. But just for the record, the I T E, the trip generation numbers that we use as traffic engineers also bear that out. If I didn't know anything about this and we didn't have forty two years' experience and I just had to use the empirical data that's out there. The the hourly traffic decrease is twenty six trips and the daily is over three hundred and twenty trips less than the prior pool use. So from just common sense perspective, from forty two years of experience on this property itself and from the I T E data, this is a win from a traffic standpoint and and parking standpoint. And I'll let the planner bore you more than I do this time. I'm usually the boring guy all night.
One question, do you mind observation that we've got such limited users coming in and out with cars? It it works well for us to keep the lighting more located towards the building area?
Oh, a hundred percent.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, a hundred percent. Don't make the neighbors angry to light up parking spaces that are very infrequently used.
Question for you, does the business model host any kind of tournaments or anything where you'll have other people showing up to increase traffic?
No, we do not host.
Okay.
I have enough courts, then I'd have to put in another four more.
Okay.
Yeah, it was there and there's a window you can see into the two courts that are there, but there's no stands or spectators, there's no place where you'd have that kind of.
Fair enough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. On final minutes, Mr. Chairman, members, our project planner, Paul Ricky.
Thank you.
And we will have other exhibit for the board members that had an individual professional shortly.
Raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And your name and address?
It's Paul Ricky, R I C C I, one seven seven Monmouth Avenue, Atlantic Highlights, New Jersey.
Paul, your license, credentials, background, experience, please?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, have been licensed since the year two thousand. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a graduate degree in in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, which I received in nineteen ninety seven. I'm currently a municipal planning consultant to six towns. Testify regularly in in front of boards, I've been qualified over two hundred and fifty towns throughout the state.
Thank you, we accept Mr. Ricky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Paul, you're familiar with the applicant's business operations, both existing and as proposed, is that right?
Yes, I I visited the site, spoke with the applicant about that.
Is there any plans that are on file with the board?
I am.
The municipal code and the relief that's required?
Yes.
So with that, I know you've got a chance to formulate some opinions and conclusions as to the variance justifications, if you wouldn't mind, Paul, taking the board's.
Through order.
Those items.
And I I have a handout and I'm going to go through it pretty quickly, I mean, you know, and.
Two, it's a two-page deck, Paul?
It's three-page. The first page consists of an aerial created in a geographic information system. It's followed by two pages of images, taken both on the site and in the surrounding areas.
Collectively, Amanda, as one exhibit, eight, what do we have two?
Eight.
Eight.
Thank you.
You took all the pictures that are in here?
Are they?
Okay.
So again, just to qualify the exhibits, entitled Exhibit one, six forty nine Springfield Avenue. Aerial image, Berkeley Heights, New Jersey. So the, this is just a two thousand and twenty aerial image. When you work in a geographic information system, this is the latest image available. In the geographic information system, it allows me to overlay multiple layers. Here, we're we're showing the the tax lots and clearly the site is outlined in orange. I just wanted to quickly just talk about the area, I know the board knows it. Existing land uses in the area and the like. You see the small numbers on the arrow, those are the block and lots, so if we need to reference a property, I'll refer to that as well. So, you know, we're in your downtown district, which allows for, and I'll speak to this more in a moment, a full range. So, you know, we're in your downtown district, which allows for, and I'll and I'll speak to this more in a moment, a full range of uses. Uh, we immediately on on the site itself, it's it's a very interesting site, you have to admit, right? Because you have the grade level, you have. Three restaurants and the in in the the additional is a it's a a window design studio. Um, at grade there nearby, you have a haircuttery. Uh, as you move down, moving in the westerly direction. There's C N L auto body. There's an orthodontist. There's a Korean restaurant and an Italian restaurant. You come across the street, you have doctor's office, a two-family use, a salon, another two-family use, followed by a car wash. Um, one use in there, actually parked by Ariel, is a driving school and directly across the street, there's a funeral home. Uh, as you move across Passaic Avenue on the opposite side of the street, uh you have office space, a single family home, a diadrist. Um. Um, it was it that the my notes are bad, Dover or Doorboy? Doorboy, which the screen doors is company or?
Right.
And then garage doors. And then you have the nursery. Um, on the opposite side of the street, you have the new mixed-use building uh that's pretty new. And then in the intersection of River Road. Uh, in Springfield Avenue, there's a single family residence. So there's a there's a full mix of of uses. Uh, in this area that you would expect in a in a commercial downtown environment. Just a few pictures of the area. Um. Um, and the first picture in picture eight, we're going to show the existing uh photograph taken just a few days ago, a week or so ago. And then uh in picture eight, we're going to show a street view image uh as well. And I I know that some existing images were 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 passed out by the applicant uh as well. So uh view number one, that's that's taken from the from the intersection looking on to the site. And the only tree that's going to be removed there is the tree that's necessary uh to to install the streetscape. And then the applicant is going to replant and supplement the tree. So the design theme here was to, you know, this is a it's a tennis facility. So there's only so much architecture that can be done. The the design theme that the architect, when I spoke with him about this, was to blend the building uh with landscaping. So it's not just a a a a direct focal point, but to to not to hide it, but to not for it to be just an unobstructed view. And and in my uh visitation to the site, uh it it's it's a site in in progress because the removal of the the former uh swim club there. Uh, as you see in pictures number two and three, um, the 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 site's under repair. Uh, and it's in need of of improvement. So hopefully the board sees appropriately improves this application, we can uh improve these conditions. And then picture number four uh shows the parking lot. You can see that new fencing and you can see very mature vegetation that surrounds this site with the adjoining uh residential uses. Um, the entrance to the facility from the rear is in picture number five. And we have a new, we show a new mixed-use building at the intersection, the opposite corner, and picture number six came very nice, I believe. And then picture number seven shows the the frontage of the subject tract. Um, the existing commercial uses um looks like to me a blend of of brick on the front with some from stucco on the upper floor. There's my sheet. Uh, and then following picture number eight shows a street view where you can see. Um, we believe there's going to be a fairly similar condition ultimately where there's a is a building with with not a lot of architectural interests associated with the swim club. That has historically existed. Um, that has since been removed. Uh, thank you, Larry. Um, in terms of the variance relief, I wasn't going to relist everything, but one thing that we did not talk about. We are seeking the D one use variance to locate, you know, to to expand this facility. Um, years ago, we we these are usually traditionally called an expansion of a non-conforming use. However, because the facility was approved by use variance, it's technically characterized as a as a D one use variance application. Also a part of this application, if we move back to the photographs. If you look at photograph number two. Um, and if you can see the white portion of the building with the blue door there. Um, that's the area where they're proposing to have a residential apartment and that apartment would be for a a tennis pro. Um, and speaking with the applicant, tennis pro would be on site. Uh, that's part of the arrangement to be a pro at the facility. And there's some benefits associated with that as well as having that person on site, we believe, in terms of having that twenty-four hour presence. Um, somebody comes into the lot, it provides a little bit of additional security at someone's residence uh personnel. So it would act as a a building manager and a pro. Uh, at the facility. So I I want to make sure uh that was cleared. And it's a and it's a small apartment. The reason that the use variance is required, the code in the downtown allows residential on the upper floor. But while this is elevated and at a a height that you can contemplate as a second floor, uh it's built that grade, obviously, at an elevated fashion. Um, and and I'll talk about that a little more and uh why why I believe it's it's appropriate um in this context. So for the use variance, we have to show that the site's particularly well-suited, will not result in a substantial detriment to the public good, the surrounding property owners, namely. Without a substantial impairment to the zone plan and for the D one use variance to reconcile the omission of this use from your master plan. Regarding the the bulk variances, we're largely seeking these bulk variances under the C one hardship criteria associated with a legal. Existing non-conforming condition that places us, that's an exceptional situation that places us under a hardship. Um, I will talk about the cases in terms of where we're partially seeking the C one variance. Um. And and where we're not for the signs, we're we're going to seek that variance of the the flexible C two criteria. We can show the benefits outweigh the the detriments. Uh, and then when we talk about the the design standards. Um, we believe we have a a a partial hardship in that regard because we have a a building here at design that doesn't lend itself to the type of architecture that you see in the downtown. And the reason that it it does work in the context that is being proposed that I'll talk about. Number one, it's not right on the streetscape. It's set back, it's elevated to the rear. It's going to be partially obscured and it's it's really a type of building that. Um, I can't really say this, but you can mask it. You can't. It's only limited. It's only limited in what you can do to a tennis.
Choose that building that you're choosing. It's an option, right? You could build. I'm not saying you have to do this, but you could build a different building with. Different materials and so wouldn't be a hardship. The hardship is because you've chose this building, which is giving you limited options in terms of the material, right? So that's that's not a hardship. I'm not saying the customer, but I I wouldn't classify that as a hardship.
Okay, okay, understood. And if you agree that that the if the use is appropriate here, uh I was tying those two together, but I'll 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 speak about that more in a in a moment. Um, I I did review your master plan in in pretty significant details. It's a new master plan um from two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, I believe this this application advances numerous purposes of 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 your master plan despite the need for um the use variance. Uh, in in terms, in terms of permitted uses in your downtown district. Uh, retail sales, personal and professional services, uh mixed-use structures combining retail sales. Or personal or professional service businesses on a portion of the ground floor and structured parking with an enclosed garage. Also occupying the ground floor with residential uses on upper floors, which I I discussed. Uh, public open space, municipal buildings and other governmental uses, theaters, general and professional offices, medical offices, houses of worship. Schools and childcare facilities, and you can additionally permit car wash facilities. I was surprised to see that. I didn't see restaurants permitted as a as a principal permitted use, and they were numerous that I I saw um in the area. Uh, I discussed the the surrounding uh land uses. Again, we need the D one use variance, but I do believe as a planner uh that this use is akin to uh a D two expansion of a non-conforming use variance. Um, when you do look at expansive and non-conforming use or use that's really been there for such a long period of time. It's less likely to create new substantial negative impacts because that use has been here for so long. Here, when you look at the particular suitability, part of this particular suitability relates to the context of of the site itself and how it's existed for such a long period of time. This application or the use variance was approved in nineteen seventy-five. Um, we just heard the testimony that the use has existed for approximately forty-two years and at. A level of active recreation that that exceeds what is being proposed today and exists today. So it's in terms of the intensity at use. Uh, it's being uh reduced here. Again, uh I think this is a a very unique arrangement. When I when I showed the aerial photography, you can see that. We, when I outline that the site in orange, um, it's somewhat unique in this area or largely unique on at least the northern side of the street. Where you have that that double depth through lot that 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 extends from Springfield Avenue uh to Washington Street. And associated with that is that significant grade change that occurs. So. Um, classic, and your your planner will probably speak to this. Classic mixed-use downtown design of having large amounts of of window transparency, glazing of windows at grade level. Mixed-use design of of residential uses on upper floors in a downtown district. Um. This site in the rear portion doesn't really lend itself to that because that visibility and that connection with the street no longer exists. And again, why having the the residential apartment setback from the street with no connection to the street and not taking away. From your downtown uses is appropriate. If you allowed, by way of example, if you allowed residential uses on the ground floor. You could, they could essentially replace your downtown and you would not have one. So that's one of the reasons that 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 standard exists. This application does not offend that, and that's another reason why um i- it's appropriate. I did look to see where else that that recreational facilities are permitted. Um, they are permitted in your your mixed-use zone, which is on the opposite side of of seventy-eight. Um, that's a newly created zone is associated with a new ordinance revision. There are three lots in that zone that are fully occupied. Those lots are quite large. They're five acres. Or there's ones, there's double lot that there's parking on it, but it serves as a lot. There are five acres, six acres and eight point seven acre tracts. Um, of land. And and in that mixed-use zoning, an anticipated facilities as large as a hundred and ninety thousand square feet. This is more of a mom and pop facility as described, uh two to three, uh two tennis courts now moving to three. This facility be one-tenth of the size that's anticipated in that mixed-use zone that has no availability uh to build uh nonetheless. Um, I I did look at your master plan. I I'm going to try not to just reiterate point after point after point. But when you looked at the vision statement, I just wanted to read this, and I think it resonates with a facility like this that. While it's in the downtown district, it doesn't have the building right on the street. It it speaks to the the vision of the downtown and how uses like this, which I believe this is a destination land use, number one. Destination land uses are uses that people will drive from further areas away to come and attend to. I think we all recognize that businesses such as that have ancillary benefits to downtown. They're here, play some tennis. Let's go to the local restaurant, shop and the like in comparison to a a gas station or a convenience store where you're just driving down the road. Oh, here's a gas station. I pull off and that traffic is already there, but this is a destination business and as a planner. Um, we find these to be very attractive. Um. Not potentially in the form it is, maybe not right on the street, but in that area where you're going to be able to capture those individuals uh in your downtown. Um, so the vision statement says, uh, the township, and this is I'm abbreviating a portion of it, the township will continue to enhance its community facilities. And infrastructure to ensure a high quality of life for residents. Its residential areas will retain their strong neighborhood character defined by Necolic Streets and Eclectic Homes for Families. While offering improved walking and bicycle access to parks, schools in the downtown. And now here, at the same time, the township will accommodate a variety of housing options, business services and open space and recreation facilities. Berkeley Heights will remain an attractive community for new households, provide enhanced housing options, services and amenities. Allow older adults to age in place. Finally, the township will embrace the values of diversity and and but but then it goes on to say, this is, I find to be a very important statement. Revitalize downtown Berkeley Heights will be both a treasured community asset serving local needs. And a destination that draws visitors from a broader region, which this facility does. With a backdrop of engaging architecture and walkable streetscape, passive and active recreation spaces. This is, I believe, a backdrop of that in this setting uh in the downtown where the community can come together. A new public library, family-friendly programming, cultural events all year round. In a diverse mix of businesses, the downtown will offer a distinct sense of place. So I think that resonates with your with your new master plan vision. Again, I discussed that this is a a destination business, one that supports uh businesses. And just, well, this doesn't really matter. When I Google the word or when I search the word downtown in your master plan, it came up two hundred and six times. So that told me as a planner that this is downtown is a very important element um for the township moving forward. Um, other objectives um from the master plan facilitate the revitalization of the downtown through supportive zoning development regulations. Another goal, establish strong and diverse economic base. Build relationships with local businesses and support their growth and expansion. Attract new investment and improvements to underutilized previously developed properties. Um, maintain an inventory of vacant, abandoned and underutilized properties and promote their revitalization through marketing and development incentives. And finally, I'll just say, uh, the proposed development also implement the following action strategy. Establish a vision to guide future reuses if they occur based on sound planning principles and community needs. So it was my finding that this application advances uh multiple purposes uh of the municipal master plan. Um, I I I spoke about the residential use somewhat. I don't I don't want to be repetitive, but. I believe that the residential use really meets the spirit of of your ordinance in that it's not. Um, it's not right on the street. Uh, it's at an upper level. And it's not going to take away that window transparency that there already exists along Springfield that in its existing condition. It's limited in nature. It's one business and it's meant to really to make the facility, uh, we believe, more vibrant uh moving forward. Um, for these reasons, I believe this application uh meets several purposes of the municipal land use law. Because the site is particularly well-suited for the use. It means purpose A is to promote the general welfare of the community and also implementing your master plan. Uh, purpose G, it also provides sufficient space in appropriate locations, bring a variety of commercial uses to meet the needs of of New Jersey citizens. Uh, again, I I spoke regarding the the the. For all the existing conditions, we're seeking the the hardship variance under a forty-five D seventy C one. Um, which states that hardship can be granted. Not only by the physical conditions of the land, but by reason of the existence of a structure already located on it, which may create an exceptional situation. And and I mentioned that. Um. Regarding the design section. Um. Um, section nineteen point two point one does anticipate that deviations can occur from that design exceptions. And it and it says that. These are the the points that the board should evaluate when making that decision. Uh, generally satisfy the the purpose of this part. I don't know what that exactly means, but here. Uh, I would argue that the proposed building at a minimum results in the removal that the visual clutter. That the only reason the building hasn't been replaced is because we have to come to the board um to seek variance relief for for the new facility. But the there's a net benefit occurring from the improvements to this facility. Uh, be designed in accordance with the township's normally acceptable engineering, planning and architectural standards. Um, there is no standard that I could locate for uh an active recreation or tennis facility. Uh, generally enhance the overall development plan for the track without adverse impacts on physical, visual or spa- spatial characteristics. And we heard from the architect uh and engineer and how this project. Uh, enhances the overall development plan for the track. And also, I don't think you can diminish the streetscape improvements that are being proposed that. Not that this board considers financial implications, but at a substantial expense to the applicant. To build the wall along the streetscape, the new decorative street lighting and helping to uh start that streetscape improvement uh along the block. And then finally, not material to track from the rear property values of adjacent or nearby properties. Again, development here is not occurring any closer um to the street than it historically did, closer to residential properties. That it historically did. Actually, the the extent of the building towards Passaic Avenue was actually being reduced from the the previous swim club. Uh, regarding the sign, um, we heard from the the site engineer, I did the exact size. Uh, I did took out the calculator with no special functions on it. Um, the sign at the corner would be four point four feet tall. Uh, ten point six. Ten point six six square feet carved and painted and he discussed the uplighting. You can see in one of the pictures, it would be replacing an existing sign that arguably is not in the greatest condition today. So that would be a benefit associated with that new sign. It's a, what I would call a quaint type of sign with no internal illumination and one that's modest at best. The second sign is three point five feet tall, four point one square, one point six square feet. The applicant called it wavefinding, I called it. And in directional, I called it as a wavefinding directional sign. It's very common for directional signs that you see in ordinances to be four square feet or less. This is akin to a directional sign. I believe the benefits of alerting a driver to that access driveway supports sound land use planning and the benefits of having that sign outweigh any detriments. Regarding the negative criteria, I believe the variances can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good in zone plan. Regarding the public good, the site's really largely remaining unaltered. The intensity of the site's being reduced. The applicant has been here for a long time, it's been very sensitive to the nature's concerns. What are the things we usually hear about? Noise, lighting and the like, none of that. There's no reason to anticipate that that's going to be exacerbated or the like as part of this application. So there's no reason to believe that there'll be any new substantial negative impacts to the public good. Regarding the zone plan, also, I don't believe this is a substantial departure. We are providing a form of retail service here, while not. This has been characterized as active recreation. We're providing a destination business that's anticipated. It was not the intent of the governing body to prohibit this use throughout the town. And this use is only permissible on larger unavailable oversized lots. Again, this advances many objectives of your downtown vision, as I indicated. And again, because the site is particularly well-suited, it does not result in a substantial impairment. Regarding the, the Medici burden of proof, I also mentioned that while we technically have to meet that burden, I do believe that this use is akin to expansion of a non-conforming use under a scenario where it is considered a D two variance. Just to step back for a section, under the Burbidge decision, beautification to a site and here significant streetscape improvements would advance the positive criteria. I believe I've already advanced the positive criteria, the particular suitability argument. And in terms of the negative criteria, I do believe because this, again, because it's the existing facility, it's less likely to create new impacts, but the reason that I spoke about your master plan in detail is, is to to show that there are changed circumstances and changed needs in the community that aren't fully recognized in your ordinance that are recognized in your master plan. Again, the master plan said to revitalize downtown Berkeley Heights will be both a treasured community asset serving local needs and a destination that draws visitors from a broader region. With a backdrop of engaging architecture and walkable streetscapes, passive and active recreational spaces where the community can come together. And it goes on, this application supports that. So I believe that the new master plan identified the need to attract visitors from a broader area and having a backdrop of active recreation spaces in the downtown, which shows a new need and changed circumstances that meet the Medici burden of proof. Hope I wasn't too long, I know the planning isn't always the most exciting, but.
No, we appreciate your time and thank you for your detail regarding planning. In the spirit of planning, council, how many additional professionals do you have?
Go further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, I'd like to defer to our town planner regarding your report and any of Mr. Ricky's testimony today, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just say that the applicant's professionals addressed virtually all of our concerns in the report with the exception of a couple and some questions that had come up to me during the testimony, but specifically regarding Mr. Ricky's testimony, I don't have any specific comments. I do have some comments and questions about the plan overall that if you'd like, I can speak to now or wait.
That would be, if you could speak to those points now since you're on and if those questions are tailored to any of the professionals this evening, you're welcome to ask.
I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief. The main question I have is about the apartment. Primarily, I know they keep referring to the pro and the caretaker being the same person. So I know I've, in a similar application in another town, the pro was seasonally cycled. It's not a permanent resident, so I want to find out from the applicant if that's the case in this situation.
It would be permanent.
It would be a permanent resident, okay. All right, so, uh, the one thing that I would suggest that the board consider and then probably defer to the attorneys as to how to handle this is that when you approve a residential use on the site, you're, you're, you might be setting up for the current applicant or a successor owner to actually end up renting that unit out to, in the future, if the tennis use was to be changed. So I think it's important that the resolution, should this application be accepted, the resolution approving this would make it very clear that the apartment is accessory to the tennis court. It is specifically to be occupied by a employee or guest of the tennis use and that is not a separate principal use on the site.
And the applicant would be fine with such conditions, Chairman?
Thank you, guys. I, I think I will refer to the beautification committee. It sounds like the applicant should be going back to them, if I'm understanding the back and forth correctly, right?
The, the, the architecture needs a bit of fine tuning.
Yes.
At the comments, and we reserve the comments for the beautification committee and then it'll, should this application advance the borough engineer and the borough zoning officer as well.
Okay, great, yeah, I, I think I.
Compliance and design standards.
I share the board's concerns, even though most of the building is going to be sealed behind the retail, but the portion of a site in the front, there's still portions that are visible. I think it would be good to even have artificial windows just to have some sort of a, just to even kind of lean into the downtown streetscape design. True. For the architect, well, I know there's no natural, there's no windows on the sides of the building, will there be skylights?
No, no.
No natural light at all? Okay. There's, I see on the site plan, a street light proposed on the sidewalk. I just want to confirm if that's intentional.
Yeah, I, I did have that question as well. I believe that's, and I don't mean to steal your thunder, that's probably best for the engineer. And on the illustration provided, there's one single lamp. And if you look at the, at the plans and you think it's page nine, there are two lamps and there's a notch out. So I think it may be appropriate for the engineer to speak to the engineers. Light, the lighting, the retaining wall, I think that's where our.
And while the engineer is coming up and talking about the lighting on the retaining wall, I'd like to ask how wide the proposed sidewalk is.
Thank you.
So are we talking about the lights along the pathway or the lights on the building?
On the sidewalk on Springfield.
So the lights are, the retaining wall has been cut back to allow for that base to be set back so that basically the pole's not in the pathway and the pole basically is going to sit just behind the walkway. The base is going to be under a portion of the walkway, like the foundation base is going to be under a portion of the walkway with the brick pavers on top. And then the pole base is going to be set just at the edge.
They're, but they're notched into the berm, correct?
They are.
And there are two.
There are two.
Those lights will comply with the township's downtown light standards.
Yep. That detail is shown on the plan, the street works, it's intent, yeah. We're happy to specify whatever light, catalog number, color, all of that.
Thank you. While you're up here, two more things that are pertinent to the engineering and then I think that that'll exhaust my questions and comments. The first thing is comment number eight in our report recommends top code and restriping of the parking lot. And what I imagine is part of when you were planning.
It's not part of this project. It is been identified as a potential budget to, budget item to be incorporated in future years, but it's not going to be done as part of this project. It will be done in the foreseeable future, but not associated with this project.
Top code will put the striping on.
So the, the striping that's required for the restriping of the handicap will be.
But not for the larger one.
Not for the larger parking lot at this point, but that may be done in a year and a half. It may be done in nine months, it's just not tied to this project.
Can I just jump in on the, so as far as the striping, I mean, I would highly, at a minimum, suggest striping it. I mean, I've visited the site myself. You know, it is a little, it seems like it's a free-for-all as it sits today and the striping is pretty much nonexistent, so.
It could be steel coat and striped, is that true?
At a minimum, at least striped.
Yeah.
You know, the pavement could use to be redone. I mean, it's well beyond its useful life, but I understand your position with that. But at a minimum, the striping needs to be done there because it's kind of a free-for-all right now. And if you're going to put some striping in for parking and not the others, it's going to be a little confusing for the people going there.
We're agreeable to, to restriping that, that rear lot as part of this project.
The last comment I had also pertains to that lot. I heard you say that somebody had suggested that you're limiting all lighting to the area closest to the building, is that correct?
So there are existing lights on site, but they're not, we'll call it up to what we're proposing today. We're proposing in, you know, in close proximity, you know, a minimum of, you know, X foot candles. We're not reevaluating those lights in the back. So there's no intention to change those lights, only illuminate.
Lighting, you're just not touching it.
We're not touching it.
Okay, that was, that, that answers. Okay, thank you, that's all I had. Do we get the answer to the sidewalk width?
That's, yeah.
The sidewalk width is, it is eight foot, seven foot, six foot, ten foot. It sounds crazy, but when you look at the path of a wheelchair and the required accessible turning, that's how it's been designed.
Are you talking about the, the walkway interior to the lot? Because I'm asking about the sidewalk along Spring Valley.
Sorry.
Or not Spring Valley, Springfield.
I, I thought you were talking about the walkway interior.
No, no, no.
That is five point nine. That sidewalk, obviously, it goes right to the property line. If it went beyond the property line, we'd, you know, be having a different discussion.
That's fine, I just want to make one quick note about a comment in the report, which was a recommendation that the retaining wall along Springfield should be pulled three to four feet into the site. But I heard what you said about trying to retain, maintain the current slope, not disturb the vegetation. And I have no opposition to that.
Yeah, I fought, I fought hard for that.
Yeah, I'm okay, I just want to make note of that comment, thank you.
And the landscaping plan also appears on page nine.
It does, yeah.
There are two trees to be removed and additional plantings to be incorporated into that. That, that westernmost portion.
That western, you know, southwesternmost portion, those trees, we'll call it our placeholders for when we go out and see what the, the, what's missing to put those in those locations or along Passaic, whatever is the greatest need. And then the rest of the vegetation is softening the appearance of the sign and some shrubs along Passaic.
And that'll respect the site triangle as well as.
Correct.
So our planner, did, were all of your questions satisfied in your, your report?
Yes, thank you.
I defer to our town engineer. Same, if you'd like to read your report, highlight your report or if you have specific questions for the professionals, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Chairman. I'm not going to go item through item through my whole letter. They did a pretty good job of addressing a lot of the key items that we do have in here. I do have a couple of quick questions though that weren't discussed. So the proposed building obviously is going to require HBAC and stuff for it. Where would that be located and will it be properly screened?
So there's no proposed HVAC for the tennis court? There's only a small residential HVAC unit for the tennis pros apartment, which will be located directly to the south of the steps and pathway leading up to the west side of the two-story building to the north of the tennis building.
So as far as the indoor space for tennis, how will that? Just be dead air in there, like how does that? Maybe that's a question for the architect, yeah.
So it's, there are two, if you could please come up to Mike, we want to make sure that you're heard on the mic, thanks.
So two gas space heaters for heat? And then it'll just be naturally vented with a a motorized louver and fan system.
All right, so nothing.
No cooling.
Okay, and there'll be nothing visible, anything that is visible will be properly screened.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
You'll, you'll see the louvers in the face of the building, which are shown on the elevation, but.
Fair enough.
Yeah, that's it.
And then no, no generator proposed?
No generator proposed.
On the record.
Yeah.
Okay, and as far as the power for the building, is there any upgrades that need to be done at the site?
It doesn't appear at this moment that we will need that.
All right, and I guess you've worked with the utility companies or will be as far as getting will serve letters or?
Yes.
Talking about parking lodge. As far as the buildings, I think if I heard correct in testimony, this is more for the site engineer. As far as accessible routes, you have an accessible route for the building?
We do, it's the eight foot, seven foot, six foot, ten foot walkway going in a counterclockwise orientation parallel with Passaic coming from the two handicap spots on the north side of the, the building coming to, dropping down eight feet of grade.
And then as far as the site, so if I heard correct in your testimony, essentially the project is not, this is from a stormwater perspective, it's not considered a major development.
Correct, it's, there's, from when we look at it, there's an existing building on the site because you're looking at a five-year look back. Generally, there's a high, existing hydrologic conditions. It had a bigger building, now it has a smaller building and then we're adding a handicap path. So it's a reduction of total impervious, reduction of stormwater flows. The site drains towards Springfield Avenue away from the residences. And so the drainage patterns aren't changing, the slopes aren't changing along Passaic or Springfield Avenue. So it's going to be an insignificant change.
So in your opinion, drainage is not required?
Drainage is not required and it will be improved by the reduction of a total impervious on site.
And then I guess as far as vehicular circulation, I guess as far as the dumpster location and that type of stuff, there's no, are there any issues with the garbage truck or whatever is going to be coming to pick it up to access that?
There, there won't be, the, the, the garbage trucks will be scheduled to be picked up before the open, which is at nine o'clock. And that truck will have free range of the parking lot to do whatever maneuvers they need to do to get in and out. It, we've placed the trash enclosure for a front pick back up and they'll maneuver to exit. They won't have to back out of the, the property, they'll be able to circulate and go forward.
And then as far as that parking lot, the existing striping that's faded, obviously, we've already talked about that. But as far as the aisle dimensions and stuff, that, that's existing conditions today?
It's existing, they're slightly less than what you would design a new site at, which is twenty-four feet, they're a little bit shy of that. But given the, the low demand and the minimal number of cars coming in and out, I don't really have a concern for that being an issue and it hasn't been an issue for forty-two years, so.
And then just for the record, so in Berkeley Heights, the aisle width is actually twenty-three, not twenty-four, which I know is the standard in a lot of other places, so realistically, so. Realistically, so as it sits today, it's twenty-two, um per town code is twenty-three, so it is. So it's totally close, and as the testimony indicated, it is an existing, would be from there today. Um okay, um I think those are the. Sure.
It's just looking at the property, there are pipes that come out pointing towards Passaic Street, right? There's PVC pipes that come out pointing towards Passaic Street. Where are they coming from?
I can address that.
And then I can believe this.
Swear you went, yeah. If you could just raise your right hand, you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Your name and address?
Wendy McKay Hill, fifty-two Hilltop Road, Millington. The the drainage that was around the pool was underground, and when we eliminated the pool structure. The all that piping that sticks out onto Passaic Avenue was part of that system which no longer exists. That's basically it.
So those pipes can be removed?
Yes.
Right, that's why, because I mean, obviously, whether.
Ragly.
Or not, right, they collect groundwater and come out towards Passaic Street, so if they're gonna be removed, then it would eliminate. Or coming out that way.
Well, we will have, we, that's part of the the architectural plan is water movement. You wanna talk about?
And stormwater management more under the purview of engineering?
Little engineering, yeah. I mean, the architect will tell you where we need to drain.
Okay, just the, there were leaders coming off those existing buildings that were picked up by boots. And uh going to the underground piping, and the plan was to just pipe those. Leaders into the same system again.
So those same pipes that are sticking on onto the road would then be utilized, right?
Correct. There's one.
Right, but we we just talked about all the water going toward Springfield. We're now bringing it out towards.
No, it was going towards Passaic on the north side of the building. Those leaders were collected in an underground PVC. Drain that's gonna be, the remains are be reconstituted if it's damaged.
Right, so I mean, I think with the, how long has the old building been gone?
Less than one year.
And the new building is gonna be different than the old building?
Less.
Smaller.
Less roof, less roof area, yeah.
So uh while while smaller and different, I think it would still be good if the township engineer reviewed what the storm management plan looked like. Not that we're saying if they put one in place, but. With the underground pipes that are there, to show how the water's going to continue to drain.
So I agree, and and less is more pertinent, different is one thing, but with stormwater management, it's volume, so less is the pertinent measure. Our engineer, I think, is more adept right now to give him some testimony on this, so maybe you can give some clarity for this for you.
So the existing building had roof drains drained, went to different places. I can't speak to exactly where they go to. Um a- anytime you have a point discharge on the the ground, a new point discharge, it creates erosion, it erodes the slope. So there's a generally a um, there's an inclination to bring it to to the nearest inlet. So the, my most desired preference would be to pipe all the roof drains, bring it to one of the inlets. On Passaic or Springfield and tie into that so that there's no erosion at the top of the hill. I do have a concern of trenching through the slope. Anytime you trench through the slope, you disturb it, creates that erosion. I I I think the lesser of all of those evils is to pipe those roof drains to the spring, uh the. Uh con- stormwater conveyance system in Springfield Avenue, which is where it all goes. Whatever water does drain to Passaic drains from Passaic down to Springfield anyway, the whole site drains there. So I would propose that the stormwater conveyance system be formally piped to one of the inlets in Springfield Avenue.
And and you would have no objection coordinating with the township engineer regarding stormwater management?
I I wouldn't.
Yeah, my only concern was cuz that one pipe, I don't, I think it's only, I think it's only a two-inch pipe, right? So we talk about the flow of water coming out of that two-inch pipe. If it's, if everything was coming down to that, it would shoot out, right? Cuz it would just, it's not a large pipe, so the pressure would now have it. Shooting out, so that's why I was a little bit concerned when I saw that pipe sticking out the side of the slope.
It it's it's good that it came up. The the right, the right decision is to pipe that underground, bring it to an inlet. For even, you know, snow melt and icing on the sidewalk, i- it's best to pipe those roof drains underground, wherever those. Roof drain, roof leaders come down from the building.
Thank you.
Any further question?
No, I think I'm I'm good.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
And then just to circle back on your other questions, I did not find anything as far as the facade. And the different, it just mentioned, uh you know, three, no more than three different colors for the facade. Um and then as far as the downtown beautification committee, just uh I was looking at our notes. It appeared they were part of different uh TRC meetings, um where they worked through different matters on that. So it seemed like their main focus was related to the streetscape stuff, which the testimony before us tonight. Is to address the the streetscape along Springfield Avenue, so.
Alright, and we'll just close the look regarding the materials.
Yep, agree.
With as a condition, should this application? Um I have got a question for the principal. Ms Genovich?
Yeah.
Um you said your family has owned the York condo for twenty-two years?
I have.
You have. Um when you started this center, was the pool there or was there another?
Yes, the pool was there, um and the tennis club was existing.
And then the retail on the bottom?
Was there.
You remember, do you recall what that was?
Yes, it was the retail.
Just like, I know, there was like a. It was like an Asian market.
Yeah, yeah, Carmen's Meat Market was there.
History before I come.
I know, I know the history, yeah.
You do. Can you tell us? Because I I I learned it today, and if you could share it, I think it ties into the history of.
Well, you know, one of the founding fathers, I'm a Genovese, so I can tell this, is Angelo Dalduca.
Yes.
And uh he owned the property, um and he was leasing the tennis club to me, and he was leasing the pool to Jim Wood. Um he was in a divorce situation, and he had the property appraised at something. Really low, and she had the property appraised at something really high, so it took them a while to negotiate that. And in the meantime, he wanted to keep the stores, because at the time, they were pretty much a cash cow for him. So he got his, he he finally got the control of the property, and he sold the pool to Jim Wood, and he sold the tennis club to me, which were existing tenants. And then he kept the stores, so that that's the genesis of that condo.
The story that I heard earlier today was the the retail row of stores was originally greenhouses.
Yes, it was.
They were, they were the flowers, and the pool was actually one of the first ice skating rinks in the area.
Um I, can I correct you on that? The tennis club was the, was the ice skating rink, and the pool was the greenhouse, but that's just a little minor thing here, but yeah.
Yeah, I guess I I learned it on the fly at twelve o'clock this evening.
Yeah, yeah, no.
And I appreciate the the clarification.
Yeah, I know, it's it's an interesting property, and um you know, it's all good.
Right, well, thank you very much for joining us this evening. We appreciate it. Um members of the board, questions or comments? Ms West?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr Sylvester?
Two.
Thank you. Mr Pareda?
Uh nope.
Mr Deegan?
I am good at this thing.
Thank you. Mr Covial?
Excellent, lady.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to open up the meeting to members of the public. That have a question or comments for any of the professionals and the testimony this evening. May I have a motion, Mr Covial? Or make a motion to open the members of the public by Mr Pareda?
Circle the motion.
The meeting is now open to members of the public that have a question or comments regarding the application before us, known as Gina's Tennis World. Seeing no one, may I get a motion to close the meeting to members of the public? Mr Sylvester?
Make the motion that we close this meeting to the public?
And may I have a second by Ms West? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Counsel summation, please.
Very brief, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna thank the board members again for your time this evening. Thank you for getting us expedited to this board for review, and I appreciate your staff's. Ability to do that as well. Uh the applicant is incredibly excited to continue the use of this property for what has been there for over forty years. Uh proudly serving this community and the business they operate. Um simple adaptive reuse. It it's very interesting that we're going from a swim club with a higher intensity use, and we're going to a lower intensity recreational. Similar um athletic and professional-related use with the tennis club. We think it's a very good fit for this property, considering the use that's already there today. This applicant has been a very good tenant and operator at this facility for a very long time. They intend to do that for years to come. You heard significant testimony tonight. I think the board has very, very pointed and very, very targeted questions, uh so I know you folks understand the application very well. I just wanna thank you again for your time this evening, as you consider the matter and the relief we request to continue the tennis club at this property, essentially with the nice new addition that's proposed.
Counsel.
Thank you.
Members of the public, any uh of the board, any further questions or?
Oh, just we could, you know, recap on.
Yeah, we'll definitely recap the conditions of this.
Or on that, Mr Cali, do you have any objection to me including all the conditions set forth in the engineer's memo, or are there any that you see exception to?
We're gonna look really quick, Amanda, because if if there are, then we might end up back here on an amendment, and we could have avoided that um. Dave writes long reports, so it might take us a minute or two.
Recycling, you know, the trash enclosure.
So section five point eleven, uh I'll point your attention to, the trash enclosure modifications. The applicant's intent is to. Retain it as is, is that right, Larry?
Retain the trash enclosure as proposed on the set plans, which is board on board. I just want that clarification, cuz a design waiver is required from that, from the ordinance.
That's the only one?
David, any objection? Thank you.
Mr Cali, maybe you can confirm, has the plan already been sent to the fire official and police department?
If it was not sent into office once it was filed, I am not certain if they have it or not, but I will ensure that Whitman.
TRC, so.
They they were. Um I I don't know if they've seen the final form plan, I'd be guessing. They they probably should have and did, I would assume, but uh we can ensure that. Final resolution compliant plans not only go to Dave's office, but it goes to the fire official for their final sign-off as well. Um we're identifying one more, it looks like, as of right now. Um section eight point ten of the neglecty report, the applicant shall provide a post-construction light survey to confirm as-bout illumination levels. Uh I assume that Mr Murphy is suggesting a waiver from compliance that, given the limited lighting that's sourced and proposed for the improvements here. Is that right, Larry?
It it is. I I don't wanna do an as-bout of the existing lighting in the back if our intention is not to touch it.
Okay, I mean, I think the big atten- I guess if there is an issue, how about this? If there is an issue with the lighting, then a study would be.
Then we'll look back. Yeah, that that makes sense.
Cuz the next one is a a six-month look back after the lighting's in place.
We're gonna do it anyway.
Controls, we can do the look back and figure out what needs to be done, whether we relamp existing. I'm okay with that.
And that is if the neglecty report, those two exceptions.
We just agree that you're not gonna put the sidewalk or the wall in three to four feet.
Right, correct.
It needs to be noted, I think we had comments about the pavement, I think in the plans report as well. I think the testimony was that they were gonna look to do that in the future, but they will stripe it.
Yes, it it will be striped, yes. And then the the sidewalks uh meet ADA compl- that with or ADA compliance on on the front. And the two lamps will be notched in along the sidewalk to create a clear path from the condo area, right?
Correct.
So the applicant is planning to have both buildings matched to some extent. They'll work with the beautification committee as to the materials and how they look. Um endeavor to have less stucco. They'll field locate the sign to avoid sightlines, LE control, LED controls on the lights. If there's gaps in the vegetation, they will be filled. That was really all.
The apartment is for pro-use or?
Right, apartment is for accessory, must be used by the current employee or a guest. Um striping is required. The part of the beautification committee will comply with the downtown light standards and furniture requirements, field loading vegetation as necessary.
Not the furniture requirements. Just the pavers.
The lights.
And the lights.
There's no room for benches or garbage cans.
Um and you'll coordinate with township engineers to stormwater management.
Correct, and then existing fences to remain.
Yeah, that that we've got. And the parking lot, the parking lot. We know the parking lot fence, that's what we're talking about. That's gonna stay. That's remaining, yeah.
That's a new design.
The fence and the trees and.
Did we make reference to the plantings they will fill in as needed?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
I think that was everything I had. If anyone have, want anything else?
Nope. I'm running out of paper, so I hope that was it.
I'd like to clarify.
Uh does Will follow further or?
Nothing, perfect.
Thank you. May I get a motion on this application?
Just a reminder, it is deuseign, you need five permanent.
Yeah, I mean, based on all conditions, I'd make a motion to approve the application as presented.
Thank you, Mr Covial. May I have a second?
I'll second my motion.
Second by Mr Deegan, and a roll call on the application before us.
Mr Sullivan?
Uh very happy with the project and the presentation. Uh I I vote yes, thank you.
Covial?
Yes.
Mr Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr Pareda?
Yes.
Ms West Augusta?
Yes.
Deegan?
I vote yes as well, and like to thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you. We appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much, folks.
Good luck with everything.
Thank you. Have a nice weekend, everybody. I think the margin's open. Members of the public?
See, we've been sitting here since. Uh we have a motion to open up the meeting to members of the public by Mr Covial. May I have a second? We have a second by Mr Pareda. The meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now open to members of the public that have a question or comment. Seeing no one, may I have a motion to close? Mr Sylvester?
I'd like to make a motion to close.
May I have a second by Ms West?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion, I can add motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, 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 right.
Right.
Under next meeting.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
June, twenty June, late June.
Uh yeah, Gina, Gina, when June is?
Six twenty-six.
Six twenty-six.
This was just back, we're back to front of the month. This month was a little bit of a curve, and I think, I think it was because next week.
Holiday.